Good evening, I'd like to now call this meeting to order of June 16, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mayor Shapiro, Trustee Benton, Trustee Berg, Trustee Goldstone, Trustee Greenberg, Trustee Jacoby, Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If we could all rise, and I would ask Josh Dubby, please lead us into place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to be a public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business tonight, and I'm so glad that Susie's in the house to receive this proclamation, is our Juneteenth proclamation, I'll read it, and then I'll ask for a motion to accept it. Whereas our country is made up of people from every nation on earth who are declared equal not only in freedom, but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy human civilization. And whereas our nation was conceived on July 4, 1776 with the Declaration of Independence, the classic statement being, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that all are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." It wears on 2:00 PM at, on New Year's Day, January 1, 1863, using his war powers as President, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, providing that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then, thenceforward, and forever free. And whereas the Emancipation Proclamation made the permanent abolition of slavery, a Union war aim, and provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly all four million slaves as the Union armies advanced. And whereas, hearing of the proclamation, many slaves escaped to Union lines as the army units moved south. And whereas, on June 19, 1865, almost two and a half years later, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of both the Civil War and slavery with this announcement. The people of Texas are informed that in accordance with a proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. This involves an absolute equality of persons' rights and rights of property between former masters and slaves in the connection heretofore existing between them, becomes that between employer and hired labor. The freedom are advised, the freedmen are advised to remain at their present homes and work for wages. They are informed that they will not be allowed to collect at military posts, and they will not be supported in idleness either there or elsewhere. And whereas Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866 with community events such as parades, cookouts, prayer gatherings, musical performances, and historical cultural readings. Some communities purchased land for Juneteenth celebrations such as Emancipation Park in Houston, Texas, and as freed families emigrated from Texas to other parts of the United States, they carried the Juneteenth celebration with them. And whereas, in 2021, the state of Illinois made Juneteenth an official state holiday. Now therefore, I, Mayor Daniel C. Shapiro, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth in the village of Deerfield proclaimed the 16th day of June 2025, to have a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation's approved. Now I would like to present it.
As Chair of the Community Relations Commission and on behalf of all of the residents of Deerfield, we thank you for this proclamation as it furthers the values that make this the amazing village that it has been, is, and will continue to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susie.
I now would like to make an appointment with the consent of this board of Riley Schaefer to the Community Relations Commission as student member. Riley was recently selected to the new student member of the Community Relations Board. She's a rising junior at Deerfield High School. She's on the DHS track in cross-country teams, as well as many clubs, including the Sophomore Executive Board, Girls Who Code, and Girls in Sports Club. Through the Girls in Sports Club, she was part of a team that hosted the first Empower Her Conference in the village, inviting communities from all across the state to join and discuss various issues regarding female athletes, and what needs to be done to make a positive impact. Riley looks forward to learning from others, to work together to make Deerfield an even more inclusive and service-driven town. So I would ask for a motion to accept this appointment of Riley Schaefer to the Community Relations Commission.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Riley, congratulations. I'd also like to recognize Josh Dubby as an outgoing Community Relations Student Member. This is, I think, the second straight meeting we've seen you, lucky us. He's been a student commissioner of the Community Relations Commission for two years and just graduated from DHS, and you're going to go to Duke.
Nice.
Maybe not such a great basketball program. There's a wonderful basketball program. Congratulations.
Blue Devils.
He's been an active member of the commission and consistently brought a youth perspective to the commission's discussions, and you are involved in cross-country, war bots, and other activities. Again, congratulations to you and thank you for your service. Either of you have anything you want to say?
Oh, you have a certificate to hand to him?
I do. Thank you for the reminder. Come on, come up here. We're getting good at this, right? Minutes of our previous meeting of June 3, 2025. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I abstain. I wasn't here.
I will abstain too. I was not here.
Do I need to vote on that?
You do.
Okay, so do we need to re-vote it?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, please. Let's do a voice vote on that.
All right. Mayor Shapiro.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Abstain.
Trustee Greenberg, absent. Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Abstain.
Motion passes. Bills and payroll, I'm sorry, treasurer report, Eric.
This is the May 2025 Treasurers Report. It represents 42% of the year. Pretty good month, just a couple things I wanted to point out here. Normally, we would expect the sales tax to decrease with the May receipts. That's because those receipts are based on February sales, shorter month, kind of the coming off the end of the previous year, so normally we see those drop. This month, we saw it stay pretty consistent with the previous month, but also up from the same period of the prior years. That seems to be, in looking at the file, that related to internet sales, so good news, but not a recurring village internal thing there. Water and sewer billings continue to reflect lower usage months. That's very typical this time of year still. We'll see that start to turn around here in the next few months. State income tax also up significantly this month. That's because we receive the payments the month after everybody pays in, in April, at April 15. So we make those payments April, the state distributes our portion to us in May, so. We also began selling our vehicle licenses in May, so that's off to a good start. We received some property taxes in May, a little bit early in, before the June 1st, or June, whatever it was this year, deadline, early June. So typical, but that did start to come in. We also received the TIP increment as a part of that. Notable expenditures in May include the construction and engineering costs, the annual general liability insurance, debt service payments. The police department purchased a Ford Escape Hybrid, and we had three payrolls in May as opposed to the normal two. So twice a year, we have three payrolls instead of just two. Those are the highlights, but I'm happy to answer any specific questions there may have been about the May activity. Okay, thank you.
Bills and payroll. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
And Trustee Benton.
Yes. Motion carries. Now's the opportunity that we give the public, now is the time where we give the public an opportunity to make a comment on a matter that's not on the agenda. Does anyone want to make a comment that's not on the agenda? No one has signed in. Before we go to our reports and balance of our agenda, I do want to have an opportunity to make a statement. We are living through a time of divisiveness and unease. We've seen it play out again this past week in Minnesota with the targeted political murder and the shooting of politicians. In recent months, we've also seen a troubling rise in antisemitism. Recently, a young couple was killed in DC. Others were victimized by someone throwing a Molotov cocktail while in Boulder, Colorado. Our neighbors, friends, and family members have made, have been made to feel afraid simply because of who they are or how they pray. This is not just an affront to the Jewish community, it's an affront to everyone. Folks are afraid to wear Star David around their neck or walk across a college campus. Political violence, antisemitism, whether emerging from the left, the right, and whether it's cloaked in ideology or driven by rage, has no place in our village or any place else. We can argue passionately, but violence cannot be a tool for political change. Articulating and advocating for our differences is not a weakness, but rather reflects our greatest strengths. That's how we grow, that's how we learn, that's how we adapt. But extremism cannot be mistaken for a badge of courage. And true strength lies not with those who shout the loudest, but rather with those who listen thoughtfully without rushing to judgment or to uncontrolled rage. Deerfield was and is built on the values of inclusion, respect, and compassion, and we may not always agree, but we agree on something that's even more important, something that's very important, and that is hate has no place here. We are bound by the promises of our shared future, and this moment demands our shared commitment to humanity. Hatred and division do not disappear by accident. They will not retreat just because we wish them to retreat. It begins with the courage to call out antisemitism, to call out hate when we encounter it. It starts with how we communicate with each other, the words we choose when we disagree. It matters what we post online, how we teach our kids, and how we accept one another. So let us stand together against hate of all kinds. Let's stand against antisemitism, political violence, and the ideologies that fan the flames. Let's stand for decency, daily acts of kindness that bind us together, and for the principle that our children should grow up not in fear, but with purpose. We must lower the temperature while also raising our standards. We must choose dignity over insults, dialogue over destruction, and compassion over contempt. Together, we can push back the darkness of antisemitism and hatred and make room for the light to shine in our schools, our houses of worship, volunteer drives, and throughout the village. I know we can, because I've witnessed how we stand up for one another during challenging times, when we face our, when we face our challenges together with courage and with resilience. That is Deerfield. That's who we are. Now's the time to write, renew our promise to each other, that even in the face of division and hatred, we will choose unity and compassion. Even when the world feels angry, we will choose kindness. And even when it's easy to look away, we will choose to stand up. We are stronger together. I am proud of our community, and I am proud of who we are. The consent agenda, I'm going to read four, three items on the consent agenda and then ask for the approval. Item 2448, resolution approving an intergovernment agreement with West Deerfield Township assessor for access to village building records. Item 2449, a resolution approving an intergovernment agreement with the Moraine Township Assessor for access to village building records. Item 2437-1, resolution approving a final plan of resub at 145 Park Lane in 140 Birchwood. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
And Trustee Berg.
Yes.
We have no old business under new business. We have an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal, and a municipal grocery service occupation tax, which we have discussed in our committee of a whole, but I will turn it over to Eric.
As Eric's walking up, just to remind you of the board, this is a replacement of an existing tax, and staff is recommending approval.
Nothing left for me to say, I guess. We did talk about it in detail. It's a replacement of the state repealed tax effective January 1, 2026, not an additional tax. If we did not do this, we would be looking at losing about $500,000 per year of revenue, so pretty significant amount. Our neighboring communities have either already done this or are seriously considering doing it, so we would not be an outlier if we did that. Our village attorney has prepared the ordinance, so if it was approved tonight, we would turn around and file that with the Department of Revenue so that there'd be no lapse in the tax that we receive for this item.
And just to emphasize, this is not an additional tax.
Correct. This is a replacement of something we are currently getting, but will lose January 1 if we do not do this, but not an additional tax.
And it's a replacement of something people are already paying.
Does anyone have any questions? Public, board, motion, is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
And Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
A resolution for maintenance on a state highway.
Thank you, Mayor. Waukegan Road within the village of Deerfield is owned by the state of Illinois, Department of Transportation, and it stretches formally within the village from Beechna Street, which is down near the Deerbrook Mall on Waukegan Road, all the way up to Deerfield High School approximately. So the state of Illinois is responsible for capital maintenance. As you saw last year, they resurfaced Deerfield, Waukegan Road, and the village has historically done, performed maintenance work on Waukegan Road. And what, by maintenance work, I mean sweeping, minor patching, some minor drainage repairs, minor concrete repairs, and most notably, snow and ice removal. Probably two or three years ago, the state of Illinois asked us, the village, to begin performing snow removal and ice control on the section of Waukegan Road that's just north of Deerfield High School. So this is Waukegan Road from around Deerfield High School entrance up to 22, Illinois 22. So we took that on, and there's additional, they pay us additional money for that. So I guess to back up, the state of Illinois pays us to perform maintenance services, and as I mentioned, mostly it's for snow and ice removal. On top of that, they added this little piece of Waukegan Road from Deerfield High School to Illinois 22. And over time, based on the cost of living, or the CPI, the cost, the dollar amount that they pay us changes. And in this case, the state of Illinois is planning to pay the village of Deerfield 72,320, and that's, they pay us quarterly for these services, and this agreement is good for two years. So in theory, the state of Illinois should be bringing this forward to us again, two years from now, with a different cost or a different cost agreement. It hasn't been super regular with them as far as their adjustments or the agreements. You may recall that I brought a maintenance agreement forward to the village board in February for approval, and that's just allowing us to perform maintenance work and to do minor permit work on Waukegan Road, and trying to get these agreements to line up has been a challenge with the state of Illinois. So more recently, a couple weeks ago, they sent this in the mail, and I think we're more than gracious or more than happy to have the 73,000, 72,320 to perform the maintenance work that we do on Waukegan Road. And with that, we're bringing this forward for approval by the village board. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Bob, on this, on the IGA, it says total compensation amount, $723,200 estimate.
Yeah, so the state of Illinois has the, well...
They blew it by a decimal point there.
They did blow it by a decimal point, yes. So it's 72,320.
Well, I would take this.
Mary's saying sign and get it back real fast.
I'd be happy to have the $720,000, but unfortunately, we're not going to, not going to be able to do that.
Also, why is it an estimate? Is this a firm amount, or are they gauging it on how much work we're doing? If it snows a lot, we get the $700,000?
We don't, as far as I know, the estimate is, there's no reason for them to say that it's an estimate, because we get exactly what they've, exactly the dollar amount that they've given us. So it's 72,320. I've never seen, you know, the agreements or the payment vouchers that they send us on a quarterly basis, they never change their, it's not based on the amount of rock salt we use, the amount of man-hours we use, et cetera, it's just...
It's a love sum.
A flat rate.
Okay.
And from a staff perspective, I want to plow the street to the frickin' high school, otherwise I'm going to hear about it.
Oh, you bet.
And we did, for many, many years. And when we started, when we took over maintenance of that section, then, surprise, the phone calls stopped, so.
And again, staff supports this proposal. We're getting something for something we really want to have happen anyway. But again, we're...
But is it, is it a typo, or is it just because they're, they have the agreement term going to 35?
No, it's a typo. And actually...
That would work out to something.
Yeah, it says 63035.
Last year was 70,000, so we get that this shouldn't be 750,000. We get that, and we're not, you know, you think about that distance, right?
What can you do, Ben, to get us the $700,000?
So we'll adjust, we'll adjust the agreement before we get signatures on them, obviously. And thanks for pointing that out, Mary.
So I have a question. Does the 72,000 cover our costs?
I think it's close. You know, as of late, you know, now that Waukegan Road has been resurfaced, I don't see us spending a lot of maintenance hours on there. But when we get closer to that, you know, they resurfaced last year, when we get close to that 15, 20-year mark on that pavement surface, naturally, we're going to be doing more pavement patching, et cetera, maybe some sidewalk repairs. As I mentioned, capital maintenance is their responsibility, and when we do get to, even though there's no definition of capital maintenance, when we do get to a point where I, where I feel that the work is above and beyond what we should be doing, then I usually call the state out and we meet and discuss it in person. I've done that two or three times over the last 10 years or so, so.
Yeah, the real issue is snow plowing here. When we get a nasty snowstorm, if we're not on it, chipping it, getting it ahead of it, their response is like...
Slow.
12 to 24 hours later.
And then we get a response from our residents.
You bet.
Not just our residents, but also the high school teachers that are coming from the north, all that stuff that impacts, you know, what we do, so.
Well, we have plowed Waukegan Road for so long.
Yeah.
More than 30 years. And so, you know, I really don't think we want to make any changes in that regard. And, you know, our staff does a wonderful job on it, and we get a lot of compliments on it.
But also, fair to say that Lake Forest has complimented us, and they're doing it from the north.
Yes.
So Lake Forest, city of Lake Forest has jumped into this to meet us at, you know, we flip around at Mariano's, but...
Right.
Lake Forest, so we're working together with another, you know, our neighbors to make accessibility safe and accessible.
So we've been doing... We've all heard from residents that they know as soon as they come into town...
Right.
Because the road is plowed.
They're immaculate.
There's no doubt. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
The motion, my recommendation is because of that typo that it be approved, subject to the change of the amount to 72,320 per year for a period of two years.
Does anyone want to make that motion?
I will accept the correction.
Larry made the motion, Bob, you'll second it?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
And Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2547, ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the municipal code of the village of Deerfield to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses to 10 for Fieldhouse Restaurant, And I see we have someone here who might be interested in that.
We're super happy to have our multiple restaurant operator with us, and is asking for a Class E liquor license increased to 10 for FH Restaurants. So I'd ask you to come up.
Andy, you want to step up and tell us a little bit about what's going on?
And just for the board's benefit, there was nothing in the background check that would suggest that they should not receive this license.
We know who you are, but if you could just introduce yourself.
Andy Zados with Brunch and Fieldhouse.
So first of all, we're thrilled about Brunch. You guys are doing great.
Thank you.
Thank you for establishing and staying in our community. And now tell us when you're going to establish Fieldhouse and get your doors open.
So we're hoping within a couple months, five weeks, to open. Just doing final touches on the remodeling, waiting on booths and chairs, and got some staffing to do, but it's getting close.
Do you think we could have some confidence that at least by Labor Day?
I believe so.
Okay. You're giving me a lot of rope there, so...
What kind of restaurant? I think so.
Tell us a little bit about what you plan to have and what kind of restaurant, and maybe tell us what it's going to be.
So nice choice of appetizers, some flatbreads, tacos, burgers, and a nice list of entrees. Couple steaks, couple fish.
So it's American bistro?
Correct.
Yeah, lunch and dinner?
Lunch, dinner. Elevated food at a nice price point.
And will the inside be kind of like what we're, we've seen at Bobby's, or will be a complete remodel?
We totally remodeled it, so it's all new, fresh, and...
We're excited.
Oh, yeah, thank you. We're excited too.
Will you invite us to the ribbon cutting?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I will tell you that the senior members club over at Patty Turner, I present the report of each of the village board meetings, and the question that always comes up first is, "When is Fieldhouse going to open?" And I expect to get that again tomorrow, but I can present them with a fresh report from you, just as you've given it tonight.
Tell them tomorrow afternoon.
Yes.
So you're hearing there's some eagerness to visit the establishment.
We're excited, we're excited to be starting a new concept.
Great. The liquor license that we are talking about tonight is for a full bar. You'll have full bar service.
Thank you.
And will you have outdoor dining like Bobby's?
It's all there, yep, about 60, I think. So, yeah.
Great.
We're excited.
We're excited as well. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
And Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Good luck to you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Open soon.
I just for discussion by mayor and board trustees, last... Items for discussion by mayor and board trustees. Last Saturday, we had our kickoff for the farmer's market. It was well-attended. There were total activities, I think seven new vendors-ish or so. It was good to see people out, and always a terrific thing that brings everyone together. Food truck Wednesday, last Wednesday, was the rescheduled event from the prior rainouts, and the next one is on this Wednesday, but we might have a rainout again. So everyone just stay tuned.
Hunter's shower's coming, right?
Really?
It looks like we have our third rainout. Yeah, for four years, we didn't have a rainout, and now we have three, potentially three in a row.
Wow.
We, many of us, I think all of us, attended the municipal gala last week, which was, which was great, and it was great that we made, I think we made the best showing of all the communities.
Oh, always.
Always do.
We did. It was good.
We rock it. Deerfield rocks.
Yes, we do. The Lake Cook Walgreens property, or formerly Walgreens property, those are the six buildings on Lake Cook on the south side of Lake Cook. The first one is going to start interior demo very soon, this week, then exterior, exterior demo, building by, well, duh, building by building. But those fences have been up for a while.
Yeah.
Interior, it's going to go from east, west, east to west. So the furthest...
West, west to east.
Yeah. West to east, Bob?
West to east on the Lake Cook Office Center buildings.
Okay, west to east, sorry. I got confused. From west to east, and the first, most western building will start interior demo this week. Then there's also work at Lake Cook and Wilmont, and that's a little bit of a mess.
Lake Cook, this is Lake Cook Road patching.
Yeah, at Wilmont, and that will continue for another few months. It's needed, and it's summer, and...
And we don't control it, and we're trying to...
And that's just how it is.
Make it as good as it can be, but it's going to be a pain in the tail.
It also, it also be, should be noted that this is concrete, not asphalt, so it is done, and takes a while to get done right and cure and last longer, I assume.
Right.
Yeah. So we got...
Who's doing it, state or county?
Cook County. Cook County Highway Department.
So...
Wish it was us. It's not.
Between those things, as well as the other construction projects, public works and building, you guys are super busy, and you continue, Bob, you and your staff, continue to do a really fine job on managing all this, and we thank you. Family Days. We will not be meeting again before Family Days. We'll meet after Family Days, so it's coming up.
And staff's got a, staff's got a thing that they can show you.
And staff's got a thing, so, yeah, let's do your thing. Jessica, there we go.
Thank you. Hello, mayor and board. Yeah, so we're gearing up for Family Days in another couple of weeks. We have a slew of sub-events, starting off on July 3. The park, Shepherd Park, will open at 5:30 with a local favorite, Louis in the Middle, who will play till seven. Then we also have American Legion will be doing the Raising of the Flag, and that'll be at seven. And then we move on to children's activities. We also have food, beer, and wine sales this year. And then we have our live music by Mike and Joe's Band, and then the fireworks display at around 9:15. So pretty packed on July 3. And then July 4, we're stacked on the hour every hour. So we kick off the day with the Rotary 5K Race and Walk at 7:00 AM. Registration begins, and then we have the Deerfield Lions Club Pancake Breakfast from 8:00 to 10:30, Arts and Crafts Fair to eight, from 8:00 to 3:00. We have about twenty-eight vendors for that. Then we have the Children's Bike Parade from 8:30 to 9:00, and our Dog Show from 9:00 to 10:00. We have New this year. We have Bingo, 10:00 to 11:30. Then they take an intermission for the parade and start back up after that. And then again, we have children's activities, DJ, food vendors, and of course, the Independence Parade. And then kind of to end things off for the day, we have our pie eating contest, and I urge our board to sign up themselves and their neighbors and friends.
Go, Mary.
Mary is signed up. She's got a special gluten-free order with Deerfield Bakery, who is sponsoring the event.
I am a veteran.
Thanks to you, we have really good participation in the parade this year, so thank you for a great job. I know you and Justin have been working hard on this.
Absolutely. And our commissioner, Gillian Akuna, she's just done absolutely amazing this year for us again. We have sixty-one parade participants, so.
Yeah, that's great. And last year, I think we were in the high forties, so...
Fifty, fifty-one last year.
Okay, so we have a big jump.
Yes.
Of more participants, and a special congratulations to you, having received your MPA from DePaul.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Those are my items under my report. Kent, you got anything?
Nothing new.
Trustees, anything? No? All right, so at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to enter into closed session, pursuant to 5 ILCS, 122C1. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yep.
And Trustee Benton.
Yes.
We'll go into executive session. We will not have any further business after we come out, other than to adjourn the meeting.